Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council's special meeting of October the 7th. Call to order and roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. May we please ask Mr. DiMartini to lead us in the pledge. Okay, so, public comment for items that are not on the agenda, and if there are speaker cards, I have none. There are speaker cards that can be brought forward to Jennifer, who's sitting next to the police chief, you can kind of tell. And if not, with nobody coming forward, we will go ahead and move on to the special meeting, the study session, to receive proposal presentations from the prospective hotel developers for the vacant 1.5 acre site location within the Crossing Development. City manager.
Good evening to the mayor, the city council, and members of the public. My name is Jovan Grogan, and I have the pleasure of serving as San Bruno's city manager. We are here today for a special meeting of the city council to receive presentations on the city's efforts to remarket a city-owned 1.5 acre site for a hotel. The site is within the Crossing Development that borders Interstate 380, El Camino Real, and is directly across from the shops at Tanfran Mall. As the city council knows, this effort is a part of our broader fiscal sustainability initiative to provide one-time and ongoing revenue for the city programs and services that our residents are demanding and they deserve. The eventual development of a hotel on the site will also add to the vibrancy of the local economy and build out the last remaining parcel within the Crossing Development, which is a 20-acre master planned development which was envisioned more than 20 years ago and resulted from the demolition of a former U.S. Naval Administration facility. Today, the development has over 1,000 residential units divided into five buildings, including 325 affordable units, over 220 of which are designated exclusively for seniors. It has a recreation center and a commercial building. The city of San Bruno, you may recall, purchased this vacant site in 2012 for $1.4 million. A prior effort to sell the property began in 2013 when the city council authorized the city manager to enter into exclusive negotiations with OTO Development Group. That resulted in a purchase and sale agreement for $4 million. However, unresolved issues related to unionized labor to both develop and operate the project, as well as increases in construction prices resulted in OTO informing the city in November 2018 that they would not close escrow on the site. Subsequently, the city engaged the services of CBRE to remarket the site to both national and international hotel developers. CBRE is here tonight. We have Jay Scholl and Henry Bowles. They will inform the city of their work to date that has been done on behalf of the city council and the full community. Following their presentation, the city council will hear proposals from two prospective developers that are vying for the opportunity to construct a hotel on the site. The negotiated price is $6 million from each developer. However, as you'll see, the developers have a unique skill set and approach to the project. Each developer will have 20 minutes to give their presentation, followed by a 10-minute question period from the city council. After both developers have presented, the city council will ask any clarifying questions of either developer. It is important to note that a decision on which developer the city will enter into exclusive negotiations with is not on the agenda for tonight. Tonight is only presentations and clarifying questions. That decision on which developer the city will enter into exclusive negotiations with is scheduled for tomorrow night at the regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM. I will now turn it over to Jay Scholl from CBRE.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff. Good evening to everyone behind me in the public. Pardon my back. My name is Jay Scholl. I'm a senior vice president with CBRE. Alongside me is my partner and colleague, Henry Bowles, who's also a senior vice president. We were retained by the city back in March to take on this assignment. We're part of a larger team that encompasses Atlanta Quoc. Sort of the three of us were the lead on this assignment, and we're supported by a couple of folks in our lending group so that we can offer a structured finance solution if necessary, and a couple of marketing folks. Henry, why don't you take us through the quick sort of history in terms of what we've done here on the Peninsula in the past?
Yeah, really, really quickly. CBRE is a global firm, but we do have an area that just specializes in hotels. And it's important because hotels is a class of real estate that's different than office, industrial, and residential. Its base core is the day lease. We have to sell a room every single night. So what that means is that the economics, which in turn influences the value, is really on the operating company or the operations of a hotel. And so CBRE and many firms like us need to have specialized professionals that just understand that operating business along with its impact on overall real estate value. So if we look at some relevant transactions that we've done just in the Bay Area, you can see that we've done work in San Jose, San Francisco, here even at the Crossing site, which was back before 2007. And then also, we do resort land and resort transactions throughout Northern California and Hawaii for our group. The hotels platform, this is just hotels, is global. We have 22 offices in the U.S. itself. We do about $2.6 billion in hotel sales, which includes hotel land. We sold 133 hotels just in 2018. That number's a bit down in 2019, but we wanted to show this slide to show that we do have expertise in this space, and this is something that we do each and every day. When we turn to this specific site, it's our philosophy that we want to include as many developers as we can in the process, because what you get is competition. And competition is what provides the best terms, including pricing, closing, and creativity and ideas from the top development partners that you, as a city, and anyone else as a hotel or landowner can have. So this is just a quick synopsis of what we did. Basically, is that we do package the site. We go out to a broad base. We'll get some statistics a little bit later in this presentation. We also talk about debt and learn about the equity markets as well. So not only is it developers who are here today, but it's also those professionals that are behind them, from Arctex to Capital Sources, both on the equity and lending side. And we have to understand all those influencers or all those participants to get basically the best deal that we can. We looked about, set aside some key dates here. We formally launched this campaign in April of 2019, or excuse me, we got engaged then, launched in May. There's a big conference for hotels and hotel operating companies in New York in early June. We had an offer date in July. We then moved to a second round when we understood the qualified bidders. And then we conducted some best and final round interviews with city staff, which we did, basically over the phone. Some key metrics here, just so everyone knows, it was abroad. It was both domestic and international. So there were 230 hotel developers that were contacted. That's a large number of firms that do this. We had 29 that executed confidentiality agreements. That's also a good number for exactly this project. So those 30 basically parties looked at this project, dug into the project, and then were preparing to provide offers. We did provide some city tours for those very interested party. We did six of those, and we got five initial offers. That led to three best and final offers, and we do have two finalists that will present today. I would say that one of our finalists, which happened to actually be the lead in terms of pricing, did decide not to present today, primarily because of what they viewed as construction costs and high labor costs. And so they decided to decline coming to present. Why don't you talk about that a little bit?
So as Jovan mentioned in his introduction, two of the financial goals for the city with respect to this site was basically the one-time event in terms of the disposition itself, but a hotel provides ongoing revenues. We recognize that any time there's a development in any community, there's some other issues that are non-financial, and you can see up there some of those that we wanted to make sure that each of the developers that were in the finalists actually understood. What's the city's process for going through entitlements? Understanding the city's goals, both financial and non-financial. How much community engagement will you plan on having with the city of San Bruno to represent your product type? Are you flexible and creative in terms of alternative design solutions? I mean, it's clear today that we have a proposal sort of based on a concept design, but we still need to get to schematic design, design development documents, and actually the devil's in the details. So understanding sort of the development program and the profile and the schedule of the project as this evolves is going to be critically important. And then finally, what is the sort of the source of the capital? Who's actually the equity, and will there be debt in terms of the structure of the finance? So that's the sieve, if you will, in terms of the criteria, the filters that we interviewed each one of these developers through. And I'm happy to say the two finalists did really well in all those categories. I apologize for this slide. It's really tough to read, but the reality is that both developers today have the same financial offering in terms of purchase price, which is $6 million for the site. I'm not going to go into sort of the difference in terms of the sizes of the hotels, rooms, et cetera. I'll let them get to that in their presentation, because I think it'll be easier to read. This is the preliminary schedule in terms of where do we go from here. So we've already shortlisted everyone. The selection process will take place later this month, and then we anticipate a few months to get through this negotiating, both the exclusive negotiating period as well as a purchase and sale contract, which will be executed upon closing sometime, you know, in the early part of 2021 or so. And in closing, I was ahead of myself. Here's the schedule in terms of the development pipeline, in terms of timeline. So entitlements between now and the end of '21, execute the purchase and sale agreement sometime in '21, and then, in effect, construction permitting, construction timeframe, and then opening sometime in '23, '24. And that's it for us.
If there are no questions from the city council of CBRE, we will turn our attention to the Black Ridge presentation. And again, Black Ridge will have 20 minutes for a presentation, followed by a 10-minute Q and A. But first, are there any council questions?
Marty had a question. A few gentlemen.
Yes, please. I was wondering if you could please comment on the developmental interest on this project? Is it, would you gauge it as average? With a little bit of commentary on the market right now, just to kind of get some more feedback on that.
Sure, sure. A few things I think are important. A few influencers that I think we've talked about in the past. One is that there was a former award winner on the site, OTO, and that history does impact exactly what transpired with our campaign. Specifically, we'll find out exactly where that all ends up, but each of the parties did have a lot of questions on what happened on the previous process. Today, because of what's happened in the city with YouTube and even at Tanfran, lots of excitement for this site. So, as we said, 30 was a very good number. We got a lot of people asking a lot of questions on exactly what's developing through here. San Francisco Airport has another big demand driver for this besides YouTube, was a big force or a big, you know, sales kind of strength of our campaign. On the kind of the cautionary side, we are late cycle in terms of exactly where the economic cycle is today. And in that, even with that backdrop, labor costs keep going up and construction costs keep going up. So those are two, which we heard from Jovan earlier, that were cited reasons before in the past. Those are two issues that I think you're going to hear from our development partners here that are making presentations. Does that answer your question, Marty? Thank you.
We're good, Jovan. We'll have Black Ridge come up.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and audience. My name is Scott McChesney. I'm with Black Ridge Group. We do have a presentation. We're excited to be here for that. I've got a team here as well. We've got our architect, Axis GFA, and then GC here as well, Store. And that's our team. Couple of the groups couldn't make it. Washington Holdings is our equity group out of Washington State, and Marriott International, who is the brand member we'll have working on the site with us. Just go through some quick qualifications of why we think, you know, we'd be a good group to work with the city on. You know, recently, we completed a 230-room Hyatt Place in San Francisco. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it. Turned out very nice. We were able to finish that project in about 36 months, which is pretty aggressive when it comes to San Francisco. Typically, projects take four to five years, but we were able to get it done much quicker than that. We have a strong relationship with the construction industry. We now, a couple of projects we're working on the area. Obviously, we have a good relationship based on that project itself. We have a strong track record of completing complex projects. We'll go through kind of the stuff my associate and I, Tim Wilson, have worked on over the past 10, 15 years. You'll see the very complex, you know, very large in scope. We have, like I said before, we have two projects in Northern California currently. We've got a project down in Fisherman's Wharf that we are under contract on and going through our planning with the city of San Francisco. We also have a project in Sacramento now that we're working on in downtown Sacramento in an opportunity zone. And we've worked with cities in the past. My background, myself, I'll get into a little bit more, but I worked for the Walt Disney Company, so had a lot of interaction with the city of Anaheim as we were planning the project out there. We've done other projects with the city of Denver and the city of Glendale where we had to work on different aspects of the planning, participation by those agencies in the project itself. And as I said before, we've assembled a high-quality group, and we'll go through the resumes of each of these individuals here, but they probably represent about eight or nine projects right here in the Bay Area, either on the construction side or on the design side. And lastly, we have a strong track record of working with communities. Just for example, in the San Francisco project, we held three community meetings prior to even going through our design, final designs middle with the city. We incorporated a lot of the concerns they had. And then when we actually got the project going, we had bi-weekly meetings with the neighbors to tell them where we are in the project and to make sure they didn't have any concerns relative to the construction or any of the issues relative to the building and the maintenance of the sidewalks and all that stuff. Again, myself, I spent eight years with the Walt Disney Company and then worked for a large developer in Southern California, Arti Olson, probably one of the larger California developers of hotels right now. And then went to Stonebridge Companies, probably one of the larger independent hospitality development groups in the country. And that's where I met Tim, and we worked on probably about $300 million to $400 million of real estate projects together while we were at Stonebridge. Again, this is our project in San Francisco. It's 230 rooms, built on a very small site adjacent to the stadium, so there's a lot of coordination on the construction, especially on game days. Complicated project, but again, we were able to get it done in about three years. This is our other project in San Francisco. It's on an 18,000-square-foot site. We're planning a 135-room hotel. We've just submitted our PPA with the city and are currently working on design and construction for that project. We anticipate breaking ground probably in about 12, 14 months. Again, you can go into probably more detail on some of the other stuff we'd submitted, but here's kind of a representative sample of some of the projects we've done in the past. Again, complicated urban-type projects, fairly large scale. Just a couple of them. This is a 302-room Residence Inn in downtown Seattle, across from the Convention Center. We were able to get Marriott, we worked very closely with the brands. We were able to get Marriott to sign off on a smaller room size for that project. At first, they were kind of reluctant to do that, but now they use this hotel as an example of an urban Residence Inn room. Again, large-scale project in New York City. Tim spent a lot of time out there working on this project. 40 stories, 350 rooms, and it's right across the street from Madison Square Garden. This is our expected capital partner, Washington Holdings. You know, they're a very good fit for this particular project because they just opened a Marriott Element Hotel, and this is, that's the brand we propose here. So they got really good experience with that brand and Northern California. So they just opened that hotel, and you can go down and actually see it and touch it. That opened up about a month ago. They also have about seven hotels in California currently, and their focus is primarily on select service on the West Coast. And what's good about Washington Holdings, they have a long-term, they represent the Washington State Pension Fund, so they've got a long-term view of the world. So if things do come to an economic slowdown or, you know, any kind of turn-down, they're likely to want to move forward just because they have a 30- to 40-year timeframe. Again, this is our project in Santa Clara. And we're currently working on this with Store Construction. They're here to answer any questions about their group. But they've got a strong track record here in California. They've recently completed four hotels, an Element in Melpitas, so that gives them a good track record with this particular project or this particular brand. I mean, go a little bit more of the brand. They just completed an AC in Sunnyvale, drove by it last week, beautiful project. AC in Santa Clara, and an AC courtyard project they're going to be doing in Palo Alto. So they've got a really good understanding of current construction challenges, both with labor and cost currently. That's just one of the examples of projects they're working on. You'll have in your package. And there's the Element that they're, I guess, finished at this point. Architect Axis GFA located here in San Francisco, so they got a real good understanding of California as well as Northern California building code. Again, headquartered here in San Francisco. We've done a few projects with them. Currently, we're working with them in Sacramento. So again, there's a real good synergy between all of the members. Axis GFA has worked with Store. We work with Axis, and we've worked in the past with Washington Holdings. So there's just an example of some of their projects. And they can get into some of the thought process behind the current design we have of the building if you choose to ask questions. That's designed for their building in Palo Alto currently. And getting into the specific project itself, this is kind of our thoughts about the project. We took kind of a new look at it because we could see why OTO would back out. I mean, a very complicated, very costly construction. So we tried to, I don't want to say simplify it, but make it, and that's why I think Tim and I worked together very well to come up with a very unique, good-looking design but can be built. We built that hotel in San Francisco, probably 20% lower than hotels were being built at that time, just by the unique design of the building. So again, we're hoping or we plan to deliver a hotel, high-quality design and construction, but not only that, feasible, that it will actually get built. I know the city wants to get something done quickly, so, you know, that's our intent too. We know that the hotel will create a great source of local income with the TOT tax, a great amenity. Again, you know, we're open to talking to the community about, you know, things in the hotel they'd, you know, like to see relative to design or amenities in the hotel. Obviously, local job creation. And we, we'll give a little bit of the brand, but we think, you know, this particular type of hotel, Marriott Extended Stay, will benefit the current businesses in the area, YouTube, Walmart.com, as well as all of the travelers that come into the city and don't want to stay in San Francisco. And as part of that, you know, we're planning to provide transportation, you know, to really be more of a green, and that's kind of the focus of the brand anyways, provide kind of a green experience. So provide that local transportation to BART, Caltrans, so you don't need a car. I came here today, I didn't have a car. Again, Element is Marriott's kind of newer brand. It was acquired through the Westin or the Starwood transaction. It's kind of a green concept, very socially conscious, very clean, light design, very upscale, you know, more for the younger generation, I guess you could say. Summary of the project, again, Element by Marriott, 176 to 180 rooms. So as part of our project, we're looking to increase the number of rooms on the site. It's about 103,000 gross square feet. Currently, we're showing as five stories. You know, we'd be open to a different design, maybe a little bit higher project, but we tried to scale it down to be in line with the community. Parking spaces, and that's something we'll have to talk about. You know, we're looking to reduce the required parking count, and, you know, that goes with, you know, we've built quite a few hotels. In fact, in San Francisco, as part of the push to more socially conscious carpooling, things of that nature, they only allowed us to have 14 parking spaces for a 230-room hotel. So, you know, we think that number would be a good number for this project based on the carpooling, sharing, you know, mass transportation that we're looking to provide. Our estimated construction cost, just for the construction itself, given the high labor and construction costs out here, is $43 million. And our total estimated budget is about $6.5 million or $350,000 per room. Not cheap. We've done a lot of analysis relative to the market out here. We've looked at the competing hotels, in particular, the Marriott Hotels, and we think upon stabilization, we'll be at about $240 in rate. Occupancy about 80%. The market out here is a little bit higher than that right now, but this is a larger hotel, number one, and number two, there is a significant amount of supply coming in into the market. I just read another article about a 400-room Extended Stay Hotel being proposed, I think in Burlingame. So, you know, we are cognizant of additional supply coming into the market. And with that, and the city's TOT tax rate, we're estimating about $1.5, $1.6 million in TOT on an annual basis upon stabilization. And here's the kind of, the way we took a look at it. We wanted to, obviously, going underground with parking is very expensive, so we tried to lay this out where we get enough surface parking spaces and still provide enough, well, provide for the number of rooms we wanted to get on the site to make it economical. So what we've done is we've raised the building up in certain areas to allow for parking underneath or pathway underneath the building. That's kind of the typical floor layout. And that's just a concept of what the elevation would look like. You'd come in off of, I forget what the road that is, but you'd have the front entrance there. Be a five-story element facing the adjacent apartment building. Again, a different view. You can see part of the building being raised where you could drive or park underneath And this is just kind of the way it would sit on the site. You can see kind of that green area. We didn't get a chance to show the parking area there, but that's kind of the configuration and the height you would see on the site. And that's the south view coming into the project. North view, off the freeway. We're a little concerned. We were trying to figure out how to best screen that pool area, because I was on the site recently, and between the airplanes taking off and the cars on the freeway, it gets a little noisy. And that's something we could work with staff or council to figure out the best configuration and look of the building. This is what we're proposing. Purchase price of $6 million, 90 days for exclusive negotiations. We're proposing a 90-day due diligence period after the development, binding development agreement. Earnest money, $250,000, and closing 30 days after building permits. And hopefully, it's a little bit faster timeline than what Henry gave you. A lot faster timeline. This is what we see as the entitlement process after reading through the specific plan. Again, we need to... Again, we need to, specific plan change to go from 152 rooms to 176 or 180 rooms, whatever we can work out with staff, lowering the required parking ratio from 1 to 1 to about .77. And I've been very successful in making that work in other cities, other towns. Burbank, California, I got .8, which is probably more of a, obviously, a drive-through area. Melissa Viejo, California, we got .8. And it all seems to be working pretty well. Staff had brought out possibility of a billboard signage on the site, so that's something we'd like to explore with staff as well. And then again, we're open to discussion on the design of the building. We've got our GC we've been working with on different types of construction, whether it be type 1, type 3. So we'd be open to increasing the building height if that's something that staff would support and would like to see. Development budget, kind of breaks out our costs. Again, not a very inexpensive project, but we think it's an excellent site, long-term. You know, it's going to hold its value. A lot of institutional interest in this type of market. So we're going in kind of eyes-open with the amount of dollars it's going to take to build this thing. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation and keeping on time. So before we open it up, just because obviously this question has come up and will be to the next speakers as well, but can you help just for us up here, because this is an important part of San Bruno, who we are, can you describe the efforts that you're making with labor as it comes to being part of this process?
Well, obviously, until we're chosen, we haven't really had any discussions with labor, other than...
Can you speak into the mic?
Yeah. Obviously, we haven't been chosen yet, so we haven't had any discussions with labor on this particular project. You know, all I can tell you is that we've worked successfully with labor in San Francisco on our Hyatt Place project. And our GC here now has worked with union and non-union labor in all of Northern California. So I don't know how to best answer that, other than that.
Thank you. Okay, so to my colleagues, about 10 minutes for any questions. This time, Michael? Okay. Henry?
I do.
Please.
You described green building. Can you elaborate on that? And are you using solar in anything, to heat anything or do anything?
You know, we haven't designed the building, so I can't speak on it's solar in the building or not. But I can say that we've developed a platinum building in San Francisco. We'll probably use economically what we've learned from that and apply it here. I know Marriott has gotten very green in their operations of their building. I mean, as far as how they handle recyclables, materials in the building itself. So we're well aware of trying to be green relative to how we develop and how we make an implant. I mean, I've got kids myself, so I know we're trying to be as green as we can within an economic standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Marty?
Thank you. My question is about your comment on the openness to increased building heights. Currently, what do you foresee possibly doing there? And how high would you want to go?
You know, it gets down to the type of construction that we build and how we lay out the footprint of the building. In the conversations we've had with our general contractor to date, the type 3 construction versus the type 1 construction, there isn't a large delta right now. So if it makes more sense and the staff supports a higher building, that's something we could look into, especially if it increases or gets us to the room count we want to get to.
Could you help explain to me and probably the audience what the difference between a type 1 and a type 3 is?
Yeah, I mean, type 3 is more of like a podium, which we've shown here, which is one layer or one level of concrete, and then four, five levels of stick or wood construction. Type 1 would be all post-tension concrete.
Laura?
So I guess, piggybacking to that question, so if the height limit was increased, because I can't hear myself, I don't know if you guys can hear me. If the height limit was increased, then parking becomes an issue, right?
Well, no, we still probably have the same number of rooms, the same parking, but the layout of the building might be slightly different.
I get you. And the other question I was going to ask earlier, so this is a Westin, not a Marriott, but the Westin by Marriott. Because I was concerned, you got a Marriott courtyard down the street that...
Yeah, and it's completely two different projects. You know, by age, number one. I mean, that's 1986, I believe. So I don't know how much longer it'll be a Marriott, I guess with you. And number two, this is an extended-stay, large suite rooms. So it's almost two different customers. Here, you'll probably have a little bit more leisure. You'll have people that are probably maybe working in the city but don't want to pay as much as they do in the city. It'll be somebody that's needing a place to stay for three weeks, four weeks, or having a larger group of people. I mean, if somebody comes here, they could easily fit a family of four. You can't do that well in a courtyard.
Right. The other concern I have is there's a number of hotels that are along freeways. They just built one at the airport, which is right near Highway 101, as well as the freeway airport ramps. But this is right next to 380, and anytime you stay in a hotel, there's always a concern for quality sleep, whether or not you're going to hear the traffic going by.
Oh, yeah.
So when you refer to your construction of high-quality branded design, how do you make sure, ensure that we build a building that has actually really the good soundproofing because of that?
Yeah, I mean, you hire a soundproof consultant, and they determine what type of, you know, windows you put in, for example, what kind of flooring you put in, how much insulation in the walls, what type of HVA system, what kind of roofing material, all that stuff. And that's probably the most important thing as you're developing a hotel, is to be able to provide good quality sleep. Because if they don't, then they won't come back.
And so, we're not familiar with this brand. I mean, I am familiar with a Westin, but the Element, it does sound like a high-end. Can you compare it with any hotels that we might be familiar with that are in the Bay Area?
No, but I would just, there's plenty of them now. There were at least a couple. I would advise you just to go see the one that maybe these guys just built, or the one that our capital partner just built.
Great, thank you so much.
And then for staff, if we just, because obviously the height, just so that's clear, what is allowed?
Absolutely.
A, there's because of the airport, right?
Yes.
But what is allowed?
So there are at least three different heights on this site, and it's oftentimes confusing to members of the public. So 90 feet is what the ballot measure said, up to 90, up to 90 feet. However, the specific plan calls for 70 feet. And so the current approved plan right now is a max of 70 feet, which is roughly six stories. However, the total allowable right now, because it is in the airport flight path from the FAA, is 73 feet. So you're really looking right now, based on the current flight path, without going, petitioning, trying to change that, you're looking at a max of 73 feet. And it still puts you around that six stories. Currently, Black Ridge is proposing five stories.
Correct. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So can we go ahead and have our next speakers, please?
Cooper Hotels. So, good evening. So we are San Bruno Crossroads Investment LLC. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff, CBRD, and also thank you for guests in chamber, and thank you for this opportunity for us to present this proposal. What I'd like to do is just take a couple minutes to introduce our group. And our group, first, I would like to introduce Shane Cooper. So Shane Cooper is a CEO of a Cooper Development Company. He's actually locally grown. He's from Foster City, attended Hillsdale High School, went on to do his civil engineering from San Jose State. And he actually grew up in hospitality business during his younger days. That was a family business that he was accustomed to. He went on to do hotel operations, management, construction. He himself is a GC by trade. Then for the last 15 years, he has been focusing significantly on developing well-reputable brands in high-barrier entry zones in the West Coast predominantly. Next, I'd like to introduce is Mr. Gerald Kessler. Gerald is a Director of Development with Cooper Development Company. I would call him Hotel Guru. Over his lifetime of experience, he has developed more than 150 hotels of different kinds, different varieties, different places. And he has solely joined our team to lead our hotel development initiative. Next, I would like to introduce is Praveen Pujia. He is engineer by training, Masters in Computer Science, MBA. He is currently a senior member of Fortune 500 company in Bay Area. He's a senior member of the senior management team. He brings significant experience with project management, business development, and of course, he is quite accustomed and has a substantial experience working with unionized staff, both in past and currently. Of course, he has been investing with our group for three decades in hotel investments. I myself is Sunil Patel. I'm actually a physician practicing in Northern California, and I predominantly play a role of directing our strategy for investments for our group. I have successfully invested in hotels since, actually, since early 90s. Then the few partners who are not here, I'll just quickly mention them. One of them is Rajiv Pujia, he's a cardiologist. He also has a significant investment appetite in hotels. He's been investing for last 30, close to 30 years as well. He also has some startup investment. Another gentleman is Samir Patel. He has been extremely successful business in the technology sector. He has held positions as executive in local Sunnyvale executive, I mean, IT company. And he also has several successful startups under his belt. Strong appetite for him also in hotel investments with our group. Umees Patel is our expert in operations for our hotel development group. So, and last gentleman is Jagdis Shah. He is an extremely successful businessperson, entrepreneur from South Africa. He invests in hotels in USA and solely with our group. So should I? I've given this executive summary. Can you help me with this? So in any case, what I was going to say is, what our group, what our group brings is 30 years of experience working together very successfully as a group. We have 100-plus years of management experience, operational experience, construction experience, development experience. This is the group that brings socially conscious people together who wants to be part of the community and wants to take care of extremely good care of their employee. This is the group that has significant financial strength and liquidity. And in reality, we are prepared for the liquid assets for this property, for this project, and we are ready to go as soon as we get selected as a preferred developer. Now, I'll have Jerry mention this later on regarding key partners, but as you can see here, we have General Contractor, Deacon in Bay Area. We have modular construction partner, you'll hear a little bit about this later on from Jerry. We have very strong relation with project management company, lenders, architect, civil engineers, they are local landscape architect, you know, so some of the key partners are right here. Now, these are the projects that we have developed as a group, and these are solely developed by our group. And this Hampton Inn in Tempe, Hampton Inn in Gilbert, Holiday Inn in Phoenix, Holiday Inn Express in Scottsdale, Desert Creek area. These, all projects we develop under budget. We have always operated this, we, these hotels after the development. We have exceeded stabilized revenue, our project has stabilized revenue for every single project. And not only that, we have managed this with robust NOI of about 38-plus percentage. So we have experience in developing, and we have experience in managing hotels, and we are into long-term holding. So these are other assets that we hold under our portfolio. So next slide, please. Now, these are two current projects, not far away from the project, the current site, few miles away. One is in near San Francisco Airport, north of it, where Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott is being developed. It's about 65 constructed, 128 rooms, expected to open in 2020. And we have Hampton Inn in Pacifica, also just a few miles away from here, that is undergoing currently designed review by City of Pacifica and likely to open, likely to start construction in April 2020. An important thing here is that we do absolutely know challenges of the Bay Area development. We are familiar with the seismic issues. We have local structure and engineers helping us out. And this is just in this vicinity. Next slide. These are our future projects that we have in pipeline. Of course, timeline is sort of tentative depending on what happens with our commitment with San Bruno project. But these are the future projects that we are planning to do as a group. Now, at this time, what I'd like to do is invite Jerry to walk us through the specific project site, and then we can answer the questions.
I'd like to give you a brief outline of how we ended up with the site plan that we did. We felt that the site, because of the close proximity of the large residential community right next door, we focused the hotel out toward the outer limits, opening up the front of the hotel to that existing courtyard, and budding ends the building up to the residential property that's on the left. We felt that that was better. We looked at a number of different options, but we felt that was better than having rooms looking into apartment buildings next door. And it opens up the entry when you come into the site. You're coming directly into the entrance. And this particular site plan is not quite up to date. We've actually gone to an indoor pool instead of an outdoor pool for a couple reasons. It's not the warmest of climates here. You have some very cool days. We do have... We do have a jacuzzi that will be located outside, but the pool is located indoors. And we have parked at a point seven ratio. We actually have a project under construction, the Fairfield Inn, near the San Francisco Airport. And we were able to obtain point seven parking ratio because of the amount of Uber transportation, BART, the fact that we have bus transportation that takes people, that can take people from the hotel to BART across the street to the new project across the street and any other locations that they want to go to in the area. We want to promote that local business with, with our transportation buses. So we're looking to advertise to the restaurants and take people locally to those businesses and enhance that, that quality in the San Bruno area. Again, the, this is a five story building. We maintain the height at 65 feet. We have 174 rooms. We only have 525 square feet of conference room space, but that is optional. We can look at, at more space. I know there may be concern that you need more meeting room space. And we've left that option on the table. We've done 525 square feet within the hotel. We don't think it's a, we're not looking at meeting room space as a moneymaker. It's a convenience for the, for the community if they want to have small meetings. It's not a large meeting room. It's not this size room. You're not going to have this kind of group in there. And that's not the kind of group we're looking for. We're looking for small business meetings and, and that kind of, that kind of business. The, we are also to be more friendly because this is a residential site with a lot of homes right next door. We are proposing modular construction for this site. It does a number of things for us. And if I can get this thing to come up. It definitely speeds up our construction time. We have less construction noise. There's less construction waste on site. We have less haul off. We don't have nearly as many trades on the site because these rooms come intact. They literally are finished. Beds, mirrors, floor finishes, wall finishes, air conditioning, the modules, they set the modules. There are basically two rooms in each module with a hallway in the middle. And the hallway is left unfinished. They drop the modules in, finish the hallways out, put, connect all the plumbing. And it's very efficient. And the entire building, while all of the site prep is being done, the modulators are being built. So when the site prep is done, all that onsite construction is done, they bring the modules in and start stacking the modules. And it goes very quickly. And then we finish the exterior of the hotel and, and the ground floor space. So it speeds up construction considerably. Our, our green initiative, we want to do solar panels on the roof and use that for hot water. We have to do a little bit of a study. I don't know how many solar days you have here, but when the sun does shine, we'd like to utilize solar in that, in that realm. Electrically, it doesn't make any sense. You'd have to cover the whole site with solar panels to run anything electrically. But we can heat water for pools, for guest rooms when that comes in. And then there's backup systems to provide hot water throughout the facility if those, if we have 10 cloudy days, which you can get here. Okay. We know the clouds roll over from the ocean and you're not going to get every day of sunshine. So, but we'd like to, we'd like to take that into account. Using high efficiency mechanical systems, low water landscaping, recycled construction materials as much as possible. And talked about the modular construction. The other thing that I like about modular construction is the soundproofing. Basically, every room is a box unto itself and they set box next to box. So you have double walls. You have much higher S T C ratings in modular construction than you do in regular construction. Plus you get consistency because they're factory built. They actually bring them in on trucks, they pick them up and set them into place. And those trucks are lined up waiting to come from the factory. And they just keep bringing them. And it, basically, you can erect this entire hotel in four weeks, all the rooms. You still have to finish, but it speeds up, it shortens the timeframe for construction and it quiets the noise on the site. You will have some noise in, in doing the permanent construction, but the modular construction goes very fast. And then all the work is inside, making the connections. We have an estimated total construction cost of $40 million. Oops, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to skip a page.
And just as a reminder too, we were trying to keep each of the presenters to 20 minutes. Just as a reminder.
How much time do we have at this point? Am I good for another couple of minutes?
Yes.
We work diligently with the city. We've done a number of projects in Arizona and in California here where we've had to work closely because all sites are difficult. So we work very closely with the city staff to put these projects together and the neighborhoods because I know there's people that live right next door that are going to be very sensitive to what's going on here. And we want to shorten that timeframe to alleviate that interruption to them. Again, our franchise is a Delta franchise. That's what we're proposing. It is an upscale. I'm sorry. I've got another project that's a Delta project by Marriott. We're doing the, the Element project. So we have a projected construction cost of 40 million. And they talk about stabilized revenue of 12 million, estimated tax revenues of 1.5 million, projected jobs created 36 full time, 15 part time, 51 total employees. And we are willing to negotiate with the unions in good faith for both construction and operations labor. We will have high speed broadband, video conferencing, enhanced transportation services to local businesses. Negotiated contract with local transportation companies for longer distance travel. And there are some property lines on the property and we weren't sure as we were developing this if it was the lesser of the two property lines or the larger of the two property lines. There seems to be an easement maybe that goes all the way around the property. And we have utilized that, that property in our development to make this work. Again, land purchase price is 6 million. We have a contract timing of 60 day due diligence. There's a $250,000 deposit, pretty much what was said on the previous development. And closing costs, he describes here, and that's pretty much it. We have a very strong team. We've been together. I've been with Shane for more than 25 years. We've done a lot of hotels together. And, and we really like this property. We've been driving by this property, going to Pacifica for two years, at least two years. And we keep wondering, well, what's going on with that piece of property? It's a great piece of property. And then all of a sudden, we got, we got the call. And of course, we're very interested in getting this done. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Questions, Sir Marty?
Oh, yes. And we are interested in doing the billboard. We actually have two properties that we currently own that have electronic billboards. We've been through negotiations with them and are very well aware of what it takes to do these electronic billboards. And we're interested in that. It's good revenue, good revenue for the city. We just got to figure out how we can best integrate that into our site. And that's part of the, the process that we need to go through. Is there anything else? Yes, our cost of construction is, is less because of the modular. We speed up the timeframe in building this project by at least 90 days, maybe more. And that's significant in the cost of getting this thing done. It reduces our labor cost on site, the quicker we can get this project done. And with that, we'll take questions.
Thank you. Marty?
The modular construction.
Yes.
Where is the closest hotel that you have that, that this is, this is located? It's, I was curious of if it was really close to be able to see it.
It's under construction and it's on Gateway and...
127th and Harris Road in South San Francisco.
Okay. And just, just so I'm clear, both, this is also an Element project from?
Yes.
So they're, they're both the same?
We're proposing to do a 50 50 room. We're not doing, this also helps our cost. We're not doing all of the rooms as extended stay rooms. Extended stay room has the kitchen, the kitchenette. And we're proposing to do 50 50 on those rooms. Not everybody needs that. It's, it's a business hotel. We're going to have some extended stay people and we'll have half the rooms as extended stay, half of them will be regular. So we reduce the cost, the overall cost of the hotel again.
But they're all modular. Everything's modular.
Yes, there, there will be a core section that are not modular, but they... Yeah, the lobby area, for instance. And that will be steel construction, concrete podium. And we have a two story lobby. So there will be some steel construction. That all gets built and then the modules come in and sit on top of that structure.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. Laura?
Just briefly touch on the point you made about labor. So you've worked with other projects that have been involved with labor?
We have a current project in, at the airport. And I think Shane can, can speak to the labor issues. I know that he's had conversations with the, the hotels, hotel workers' union. And like I said, we will use that, we will use labor forces, union labor forces wherever we can on the site built construction. The modules, obviously, they're built. This company is in Idaho. We're talking to a couple of different companies. One's a steel modular room, the other one's a wood modular room. They're both excellent. We're just trying to get the price point where it's reasonable to do this hotel so it's successful for the city and the owners. And they are long-term operators. Everything that we've built in the last 25 years, we still own.
And also having a modular construction, the quality of construction is, far exceeds building on site. These are manufactured where they work 24 hours a day, getting these units done. They're, the S E C ratings exceed, far superior to any construction on site. And we've been to the plant twice and we feel that with the seismic issues we have here, the labor force that is a little shortage in this area, that modular construction would be, would be a better fit. And therefore, we feel the, we know that the cost of the construction, the price of the whole project would be much lower and it'll be a reality for everyone. Especially with what is happening in the economy right now, there might be a small recession. So we have to be careful with what we need to do to make sure that this thing can be a reality. And having a modular construction is the way to go.
My follow-up question was going to be just at that point. I'm not concerned with timing as much as quality because I want a hotel that's going to look beautiful and continue to last for many years to come. So I think that's most important.
They actually, if you want to see a modular job, and you won't recognize it, there is a Holiday Inn Express that we just finished.
No, it's a Home Two Suite.
Oh, it's a Home Two Suite.
It's a Home Two Suite that just completed on the same road in South San Francisco. And it's, it's beautiful. I mean, it's far exceeds...
You won't know it's modular.
And just last final question. Confirm again, the hotel would be, the name of the hotel would also be an Element, you said?
Element, yes.
Element by Weston?
Yes.
Which is branded by Marriott.
Right, right. Thank you.
Please. Really quick. Yes, so the, the modular construction thing kind of piqued my interest. So you said the materials are superior materials. Could you talk a little bit more about how these things, what, what are they made out of? You said some of them are wood, some concrete, depending on?
No, well, there are two, there are two modular construction types. One is steel, steel framing, steel studs, steel joists. And they literally build a box. So they build a floor, a ceiling and walls. That gets sheathed so it has strength because when they lift and place these, they need to be rigid enough that they're not going to, they're not going to rack. All of the finishes are inside the rooms. So you don't have a lot of waste on site. You don't have cardboard boxes to haul off from all the furniture. This room comes with the furniture in place. Literally, you can have the towels hanging on the towel rack if that's what you want. The TV comes strapped to the bed. All they got to do is hang it up. It's only strapped on the bed because they have to haul it via trailer. They don't want it to fall off the wall. So they are, because it's factory built, you have the same guys doing the same thing every day, which raises the quality. You don't have Joe doing the plumbing on one day and Fred the next day and he does it different than, than Joe did. You don't have... You don't have that. The standardization is, and I was skeptical of modular. I was very skeptical of modular until I went and saw their plant, saw their operation, saw them erect a building, and the efficiencies that they had in modular construction. And I'm sold on it, especially in high-barrier cities like San Francisco where the cost of construction has just, you can't even control it from week to week hardly. It just keeps jumping. Cost of materials go up. They buy out everything upfront. It's stored, and they start building the modules. The furniture comes in, they put the furniture in the modules, they put the carpet in, the tile, showers, tubs, toilets, everything is in that module.
And there's four modular buildings that we saw in the Bay Area go up from the same company.
Gorden.
Yeah.
And you said all these modules come from Idaho? That's your supplier?
Their plant is in Boise, Idaho.
Boise, Idaho. And you made a reference to the seismic issues in this area. So can you talk a little bit about how you can make these little blocks kind of stay together when the ground starts shaking?
Well, they do, their seismic hold downs are steel rods, which if you build conventional, you're still going to have those steel rods. They actually have blockouts where the steel rods go. And they're cast into the concrete, and they extend all the way through the building, and they hold all of those units together. And they're steel rods. There's at least four across each side and between each room that hold everything together, that bind it to the concrete slab so that you don't get that separation from the modules. And the modules have space between them. That's what gives you the really high STC ratings, is there's a half-inch air gap between every room. Double stud. And the floor and the ceiling are separated by half an inch. So you don't get that... I can hear them dancing upstairs. You don't get that in modular construction. Where conventional construction, you just have a floor. You don't have a ceiling and a floor that are sitting on top of each other.
And Gorden has their own engineering firm on-site that guide and work with us.
They create shop drawings. It's just, we give them the design, they create shop drawings, they build from the shop drawings, and they have an erection schedule, and the modules come in, and they just keep them coming in on the highway, and they lift them, put them into place. And the building literally will go up in four weeks, all of the modules get set.
And the inspections also are third-party inspections that the city approves. It's a firm that takes care of all the issues that the city needs to do the inspections and all that.
They have a California-certified inspector at the plant when they're building these. And the shop drawings go through the city, just like any other shop drawing that needs to be approved by the city.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation, questions and answers. Bring it back to the city manager.
Nothing from staff. We should take public comment, and then any final questions from the city council.
Excellent. Do we have any speaker cards?
Robert Rieckel.
Mr. Rieckel.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have a couple of questions for both of them. On Blackstone, I noticed they're not proposing a meeting room, and initially, they had proposed 1,000 or 1,500. I don't know how many employees are full-time employees. The other one specified that. But are those employees going to be parking on the site? And will that take away some of the parking for the hotel? Nobody mentioned about a restaurant. Is there going to be a restaurant or food service at both locations? Cooper talked about 13% or 9,800 square feet of green for property. I don't know why, how they came up with a 13%. It just seems like an awful lot of green shrubbery around that if it wasn't that big, it could allow for more parking. So I'm concerned about parking and the number of rooms, and somehow they get some kind of a meeting room. Cooper proposed 525 feet, square feet of a meeting room. And I'd be interested to know how many people could sit down for a meal or sit down at small tables or something. And is there any possibility from both of them that they could propose something bigger than 500 square feet? Thank you. I'll take their answers later.
Pam Rieckel.
I just have a couple of questions I may have missed in the presentations, and if so, I apologize for duplicating. But one of my questions is the installation, once the modular units are brought here, do we need specialized construction workers to do this? Or will it be a normal activity for them? Second question, Blackridge didn't mention in their information, closing costs. Huber said they would split them. I was just wondering what Blackridge's thoughts were on that. And Blackridge mentioned the average daily rate. Huber did not, and I was just questioning that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other speaker cards? Anybody else? Okay, so, you know, we did have some questions, and maybe I can ask both of the folks. It was about employee parking. The .77 or the .7, is that inclusive of the staff? Are they using those same spots, or is there additional parking for employees? Can you come to the mic? We're going to have a few questions. Please.
The employees will be using the same parking spaces, but obviously, we'd encourage them to use mass transportation and probably subsidize that in some way.
And then, is there a restaurant or food service within your proposal?
There will be a pantry. The way the Element works is typically, it's, you know, each of the guests get a complimentary breakfast. So it won't be a full restaurant with servers. It's typically serve-your-own type of food.
And it wasn't noted, but meeting room, is there one?
Yeah, there'll be a meeting room there. You know, we'll work with Marriott on understanding the marketplace and determining the size of that space. It'd typically be from anywhere from 800 to 1,200 square feet. There might even be a boardroom as well.
Okay. I think that's...
How many, approximately, any idea how many people can sit in an 800-square-feet room, sit down?
You know, it's typically used for like training purposes.
Right, right.
So you might get 25, 30 people in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then if I could have...
Just one quick, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Oh, you want him?
Yeah, just wanted to ask.
Go ahead, go ahead, please.
So I heard that there's no restaurant, but is there a bar?
We will have a small bar for guests only.
Yes.
They do allow a small bar.
The answer was yes to both, from both proposals on the bar. Employee parking, same questions?
Yes, it is part of that. When we did the hotel in South San Francisco, that was part of the parking study. And because of the close proximity to transportation, multiple transportation uses, buses, mass transit, and Uber, taxis, that parking is part of that .7. And that's what we got at South San Francisco. That's why we use that, that ratio. We actually have a study that was done that says that .7 is adequate for a service hotel of this nature.
And then is there any type of food service, restaurant?
It's a breakfast service, complimentary breakfast that you pay for with a hotel. And that's it. They, we will have a small sundries area where you can buy sandwiches, cold sandwiches, that kind of thing, a beer. And then there will be a small bar where you can sit down at night and have a glass of wine or a beer. It's strictly beer and wine.
The installation, does it require, once the modules come here, does it require specialized workforce or...
There is an erection, there's an erection company that specializes in lifting the modules and placing the modules. And there's a couple of companies that do that. And we know both of the companies will be looking at them to do this. That's all they specialize in, is erecting modular buildings. So they have a lot of expertise in it. It's not like we're asking a rookie to come out here and pick these things up. They need to know what they're doing. They need to know how to lift these, where to lift them, how to stage them so that they keep coming.
And where are these firms located? Where are the firms that you're going to look at potentially?
One of them's located in Telluride, Colorado, of all places. The guy brings his crew in.
It's Proset.
It's called Proset. They do a lot of these modular jobs, and they go all across the country to do them. But the owner's, his actual office is in Telluride, Colorado.
Okay. Did I miss anything?
And if I may even add, a rule of thumb for a meeting room is about 10 square feet per person. So if you have 800 square feet, it can probably sit 80 people.
Classroom style.
Yeah.
You're not going to get much more than that. Dining is going to be less.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I apologize, I think there was one question was about closing costs that I didn't, that was asked.
Splitting, splitting the closing cost.
And I think yours was within your presentation, and I think the question may have come for Blackridge, and I apologize that you already sat down. But I think that was the question from a member of the audience. What is the closing cost?
Yeah.
Could you come to the mic, please? Only because it's recorded and taped, and thank you.
You know, we have to go through each individual closing item. We typically do it by California standards. It's usually split 50-50 approximately.
Okay. Thank you for coming back up. I appreciate it. Mayor. City manager.
Sure. I want to address the issue of a meeting room and banquet space. So we had a few public comments on that, and members of the public may remember that the prior OTO hotel had a 3,000-square-foot banquet facility. And there was very significant community interest in having that facility because currently, we do not have a facility of that size. So if you're having a large wedding or party, you really have to go outside of San Bruno. What we found through this remarketing effort is not just the two that are here tonight, but really, none of the hotels that looked at the site thought that that large of a banquet room was financially feasible and within the product mix that they were proposing. And so that is not why that's in here. One of the things that the city is doing to mitigate that is that we are working on the designs for the new aquatic and recreation center, and we're looking at the possibility of including a community room within that facility. And so again, it won't be what a full hotel banquet room will be, but I think through the marketing effort, we really learned that that's not in the cards for this site. And I can invite CBRE to talk a little bit more about the market because I do think that's important. And there were a couple of comments here today, but I have heard that from other members in the community, that we're just envisioning that, oh my God, we'd have this wonderful 3,000-square-foot or more banquet facility. So I'd like to invite CBRE up.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I mean, we would tell the city council that in basically every single one of the proposals that we got, and even discussions that we had, that the large banquet room was not something that they would want to pursue. They felt that the economics on having more rooms versus having a larger banquet facility is better, more feasible for the site. And so not just these two finalists, but it was everyone.
I guess some things have changed since 2012, 2013. Okay, anything else, city manager? Anything else, council?
No. Great presentation.
Marty, anything? We good? Okay. So I want to thank everybody for being here. I know it's a Monday, so first day of the new week, and I do appreciate your time and your presentations. And I bet you we'll see you real soon. So probably tomorrow. So with that concluded, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting for the next regular city council meeting, which will be held here tomorrow, October the 8th at 7 o'clock here at the senior center. Meeting adjourned.